I just got word that our clerk is on her way, but weather being what it is, hopefully it takes her just a little bit of time to get here and she's not hurrying too much. In light of that, we do need someone to step in in her absence.
And nominate trustee Bills' support?
Motion by Smith, support by Brown, any discussion, other nominations, all in favor of the motion for trustee Bills to serve as temporary clerk until our clerk arrives, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. That brings us to approval of agenda, item four on the agenda, I'm sorry, roll call. I always miss that one.
Hold on a second.
Temporary clerk Bills.
I'm trying to find my pocket, oh my goodness, here, there we go.
When you're there, would you do a roll call of the board, please?
Trustee Thering?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Supervisor Milky?
Here.
I'm here.
At least.
Oh.
Treasurer Rice's.
Treasurer Rice is excused and clerk Cody will be here eventually.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now, item four on the agenda, approval of agenda, happy to entertain any motions.
Did we want, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Did we want to pull the public act 152 out?
We can, you can do that now, if you'd like.
Sure.
Sure?
Yeah.
Because we always pull it out when we get there too, but it's probably clear.
I was just doing now.
Okay.
Make a motion?
You want to make the.
Make a motion to pull the public act 152 sharing resolution out and put it on the new business agenda.
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Bills, any discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda with the one consent agenda item taken out, where do you want to put that? In the new business, do you care?
No, D.
D, okay, item D, you good with that, trustee Bills?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? We have no presentations tonight that I'm aware of, no public hearings, that brings us to item seven on the agenda, public comment, public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:03 PM. Let the record show no one here in person.
I have one person online, but I believe they're for something different, they're not raising their hand. I cannot, let me allow them, just in case. Oh, oops. You're on the big screen now, too.
I took myself off.
And it does say Jennifer, is there someone else besides her?
Nope, just Jennifer.
I'm assuming Jennifer knows how to raise her hand if she wanted to. So seeing no one stepping forward for public comment, we'll close public comment at 7:04 PM. Reports, boards, comments, board, board reports. Trustee Brown?
I have no report.
I love the county commissioner ones, you know that.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, really?
Last night was two and a half hours, okay, and there was a lot of tension. What's going on is, they're running up against a wall with deficit spending, and they've, they've got the, the court, county courthouse, or not county courthouse, the county building is, is closed. And their estimate, they don't have any idea how much it's going to be, but it's going to be a lot of money to clean it up. And now they're thinking about, they have to lease property and everything else, so they're thinking at least a million dollars. And so, they just recently, maybe a month ago or so, six weeks ago, told the prosecutor he could give everybody in his office a raise except himself. And so that he could get lawyers to stay, and last night, the inspector, the supervisor, the inspectors, I'm sorry, I don't know his name. But he said that he can't keep any inspector, enough inspectors, and they pay like forty-six thousand dollars a year for a inspector, and the state pays sixty, and union townships pays somewhere between seventy-six and ninety-one, and the city pays that much. And they would not let him give anybody a raise. So there was a whole bunch of dispute for the whole rest of the meeting, including public comment, about that. And so then they did order their wage study, which is going through Amy Sell, I don't know about this company, but their wage study has cost them thirty-seven thousand. And they have approved a bunch of grants, they got a lot more money for their grants. Their swift insurance sanctions probation program had an increase of almost ten grand, the fiscal year audit, adult DUI drug court got a forty K increase. And the juvenile drug court got seventy-five hundred extra, and so they got more money and they're very happy about that, and the. Hold on. Go down it, oh, they got that ARPA money through the Spark grant plan for the Harriet Park, they're gonna do the bath house, the building, and upgrade the building, upgrade the pit toilets and the playgrounds. And then there's another playground coming in through another program, so they're really, really rehabbing Harriet Park. What was brought to the attention of everybody was that Harriet Park can't be a full hookup park because it's not a big enough bath house to accommodate, there's not enough fixtures to accommodate that in the park, so that was interesting to note, I did not realize that. And then. Darn it, if I remember, I'm gonna ask to say what it was, but there's something else. Well, I'll have to defer until later because I can't recall.
Okay.
This was a long meeting, there was a lot of information, and they're still hashing out what to do about everybody leaving the county for more greener pastures, thank you.
When you have big expenses, expenses like the county building that they weren't anticipating, it's, it's tough.
Yeah, and the sheriff's building, you know, there's always those extra things, three hundred thousand here, you know, whatever, so, there's a lot of money.
Trustee Smith?
I'm good.
Trustee Thering?
I am all set this evening.
And I'm all set as well, oh, I guess I will note.
Oh, I'm sorry, but also I did tell everybody about our survey that went out, I had to answer to the public, so.
Anybody receive one?
Yeah, oh yeah.
I didn't get one.
I'm trying to get a hold of my husband, so he'll sit down with me and do it.
I even got the follow-up card today.
You did?
Yeah, I got mine last week and then the reminder card today.
I did, I got my reminder card as well.
I didn't check the mail, it was raining.
Yeah, I didn't check the mail today either, but I didn't get the survey.
Survey was last week.
Survey?
Yeah, Mark sent the email out, excuse me, manager Steel Dryer, um, yeah.
No, I, somebody took it out of your mailbox.
I'll check for it again.
They wanted to be too sure. That's what it is.
Stacking the vote.
Ballot stuffing. Wasn't me, man.
We'll move on to item ten on the agenda, consent agenda, so just a reminder, item H at this point is not part of that, and with that, any motions regarding consent agenda?
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Support, motion by Bill, support by Smith, and trustee Thering, was it your month? No.
Mine.
Yours?
It's all, everything was mine.
Good? I should have known that actually, but I didn't. All right, so we have, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. And everybody noticed the topographic survey contract with Gordy Frazier, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, consent agenda passes unanimously, that brings us to new business, first item eleven A, resolution to set a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget recommendation. And Mr. Steel Dryer, do you need to introduce anything on this?
I do not unless any of the board have, has questions.
I don't.
No.
No, sir.
What date will we set then?
Pardon me?
What date?
November twenty-ninth.
Okay.
It's our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Oh, excellent.
With that, in your packet is information regarding how to set that up, so I'll be happy to entertain any motions regarding adoption of a public hearing for Wednesday, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion, motion to approve the schedule, to schedule the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget adoption, public hearing for Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and to notice same in the morning sun as required by statute.
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Bills, any discussion on that? I didn't expect a lot, just setting, just setting a formal public hearing, with that, all in favor, this is not a resolution, correct? Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Temporary clerk Bills, would you do a roll call on the vote to set the public hearing date for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget adoption?
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Yes, for me.
Motion passes unanimously, if I have the count correct?
Yes, sir, the motion passes unanimously, unanimously, back to you, sir.
Moving us to item eleven B on our agenda, consider approval of the twenty twenty-four township manager employee agreement, employment agreement, this is just for the public's knowledge, this is something that we had worked on over a couple of previous meetings. Came to terms on what the contract should contain, basically the board came to agreement with that, as well as the manager agreeing to that. So this is more a formal step just to approve the final edits to the document, and with that.
I'll make a motion to approve, the approval of the township managers employment agreement for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-four.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Bills, any discussion?
No.
I'll just add, I do appreciate having the edit copy and the final copy, it's nice to have.
It's very good.
Yeah, thank you for having that included that way, do you have any comments I'd like to ask you since you're involved in this? Okay. Any other discussion? No, we were, I already asked that, didn't I? All in favor of the motion, this is not resolution, is it?
No, it's just a motion.
Technically, it says resolution.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, it's not normal format, so I would actually request that we do resolution, if not, so, everybody clear on the motion?
Yes.
Temporary clerk Bills, would you be willing to do a roll call on that motion?
Yes, sir. Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Absolutely.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Manager, I mean, supervisor Milky?
Yes.
I'm a yes, all in favor, all, you don't want to be unanimous.
I struggle with that one too sometimes.
I just don't see where it says resolution anywhere.
It's okay if we do a roll call, I mean, it's, I like the idea of that.
Well, thank you, manager Steel Dryer, you're stuck for another year.
Thank you, happy to be here another year.
Let's see, that brings us to item C on our agenda, fiscal year twenty twenty-four recommended budget discussion, again, just for the public's sake, we did have a preview of the budget, it was presented to the board at the last meeting. We went through some of the highlights, the boards had an opportunity to go through it in, at their leisure in more detail, and so this evening's meeting is really about discussion of that budget and/or asking questions of our manager and/or staff. Mr. Steel Dryer, do you have anything you need to add to this?
I do not, thank you.
With that, I just leave this fairly free form for the trustees to go through how this, as you see fit, trustee Smith?
I just had a couple of questions, I know in previous, the board had authorized ten thousand dollars to the Aquatic Center to kind of get it up and running, and their village is going for next spring, is there any anticipation that they're gonna need additional funding from any of the municipalities at this point?
I do not believe so, they have, I was at one of their meetings a couple of weeks ago, and it sounds like they've, just in the last months, made some significant progress on their fundraising activities. So I do not anticipate a request.
Okay.
They wanted to get sixty thousand for an educational campaign for the, for the election.
Okay.
And then after the election, they'll have their money, so.
Okay.
You know, so, do you know how much they have so far, manager?
I don't know, I've. If I describe it as cash on hand and pledges, it's multiples of what you just said.
Wow, excellent, that's pretty exciting, but there's a lot of support for it.
Another reason why I asked, because I know they went out and got a bond attorney and everything else to look at the financing and the different feasibility stuff, so I just asked, you know, for that purpose.
I'm gonna interrupt you for just a minute, clerk Cody, welcome back, we are on item C, the budget, just so you know.
And just one, a final question is, and I noticed that in twenty-three, there is money for the feasibility study for the Township Hall, is that gonna be completed this fiscal year, or is that gonna roll into next year?
Money for the what, I'm sorry?
The feasibility study for Township Hall.
What page is that?
I see that it was in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, I just didn't know if it was.
What page are you on?
I'm on the final thirteen of thirteen on the general fund. Under capital outlight department.
I anticipate that report to be issued in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. We probably, and I'd have to defer to Ms. Smith or Ms. Teal, we probably made some progress payments to date. And so I would think there'd be one or two left payments to be made in twenty-four. And did we put money specifically in twenty-four for that remaining?
Okay, so there'll probably be an adjustment or something may.
Right now, it would flow at the end of the fiscal year, whatever is not spent will flow to the fund balance, and then it would be part of a budget amendment in twenty-four.
Okay.
And it should be, I'll say de minimis.
Okay, okay, thank you. No one's jumping in, I have a few questions, I did meet with our manager and go over some of this, but I want to make sure I ask my questions in front of the public and you, so you can hear responses. So let me get my notes out, my apologies. Here, I thought I was ready. Just looking at the summary or the highlights that are in front of our book. So the first page after the cover page, towards the last three items for the general fund. So, we have nine hundred fifty-five thousand budgeted for various sidewalk projects, and then the next one, the ICRC, the road commission, budgeted three sixty-nine. Basically, most of the standard stuff, the gravel road improvement, brown applications, one project is the only thing really listed there, which is Lincoln Road south of Broomfield. And that's because the road commission's been kind of wanting to do that. And my comments were, you know, being that the road commission doesn't really tell us, our Pazer ratings for the year, and they don't, they don't tell us what they'd like to see us involved in in twenty twenty-four until twenty twenty-four happens. Makes it hard to kind of budget for those projects, but I would anticipate that we'll have projects besides this Lincoln one. I'd be surprised if there's not some roads that need attention that the road commission would also like to partner with us on. Having said that, I'm gonna dovetail back to the sidewalks a little bit, the sidewalks, I'm thrilled by this, I think this board, by and large, has been very supportive of non-motorized transportation. Whether it be sidewalks or pathways, whatever it is, that, that's important to this board, I think it's important to our community, the feedback we get, that's a lot of money, and is that doable? So I might consider moving a little bit of funds from the sidewalk projects into the ICRC, just knowing that we'll probably have some additional road projects. Now, another way to deal with this, I'm highlighting all three at the bottom here, is ARPA, we also have the ARPA money, and so if the right project came along, whether it be a road project, or pathway, or sidewalk, for example, bluegrass, we had discussions about that. We might find ARPA funds be useful there, and not need all of the funds that are budgeted in sidewalks, a lot of flexibility here. So while I'm highlighting this on purpose, because I think the reality is, we can't budget road commission very easily, because we don't know what those projects may be yet. And that we just have to resign to the fact that we're likely gonna have to do some budget adjustments in the spring to deal with some of this stuff. But I wanted to highlight this because it doesn't all make sense to me yet, because we don't know what those things are yet, that these are placeholders. I'm sorry, trustee Bills?
Manager Steel Dryer, do you meet with the road commission to discuss future projects, or is there anything in the hopper, other than that?
I don't often personally meet with the staff director, Ms. Smith does, and she has had some conversation, I mean, it occurs throughout the year. I don't know, and I can ask if the specific question came up, say, this summer to the road commission, looking forward to anything in twenty twenty-four. I believe that's one of the, something raised the issue with Lincoln Road south of Broomfield, and so that came forward to us. But I don't know if this question was asked.
Yeah, so I asked them that question as I started to put the budget together, the Broomfield project, Lincoln Road, south of Broomfield, came up actually at our meeting in the spring that we have with them, and then they did send us a estimate. And then I asked for an updated estimate when it got close to budget time, so that got included in the budget, and also asked about any other projects, they didn't have any at that time, but since then, they've been approached by a few other townships, and there's some interest in a couple of other projects, but they're in the very, very early stages of discussion. So there's no amount that we could put in a budget at this point, we're not even sure at this point, and I'll just tell you where they are, one's Meridian Road, they have money from the Windmill Apex Fund, the settlement that they got. And they talked about, they're doing Meridian Road further north in the county, and they've been approached and have some discussion internally about maybe stretching that a little bit, and if some of the townships were willing to also put some money into that. But there's no dollar amounts, they're not even sure how much they're gonna have left from the, in the Apex money, if they'd be able to do it, so that one's really premature, so it didn't make it into the budget. And the other one was Baseline Road, they had an initial inquiry from another township about when are they gonna do Baseline Road again, you know, at one point when Baseline Road was first done, several townships along the route, both sides of the road, got together and did a lot of work on Baseline Road. And there's some interest in maybe doing some rehab work along there, but again, too early to even know if any of the other townships are willing, if the road commission's gonna have funds, so they haven't approached us officially, it's just kind of something that's being talked about. Those are the two projects that I've heard about that we may get asked to partner with, not sure that it would be next year, so. And then we'll meet with them again in the spring, we always meet with them in the spring, and they could have another, a different project, but I have, those are the only two outside of this one that I've heard of.
And that's what I'm speaking to, is our spring meetings that we have, that's when they go, oh, we're recommending these three miles of road to be done.
Well, I think Meridian and Baseline are pretty important roads.
Yeah, they're major trunk lines in the county, so.
And those are partner roads between townships?
Those are partner roads, so there's a lot of moving pieces there that have to be, first, Meridian Road, is there gonna be any Apex money that maybe they can do more than, because they, they're required to use the Apex money on the roads that were damaged, but if there's any left over, then they can use it other places, so that's, so that is how that may possibly come about. But then there'd be partnerships also with the townships, and Baseline Road, that's very, that, that I think came up at the two percent roundtable. And they, when I was told about it, I called and talked to Pat Gaffney, he said, yeah, basically, he got approached that day about it, so, he said, you know, we're not in any position at this point to even talk about if it's gonna get done, so that's kind of real, thank you.
I think that was Chippewa Township that had that interest at that time.
I.
Not Chippewa, sorry, Deerfield, I meant, I meant to say Deerfield, I was even looking that way.
Who we, they would also be a partner in Meridian, so.
Right. But they wouldn't be a partner on Baseline, except, unless we extended the work, right, because they're to the west of us.
Right, but they also have Baselines also in Red Waters, isn't it?
Be Isabella Township.
Yes, right, for us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then, but they're talking about, you know, doing more than one line, some rehab, and that's the other thing, they would, they got to make an assessment on where are we gonna start with this.
Right. That's what I. I guess that's what I was getting at, is that, that's more than just Deerfield in that light, yeah.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yes. So that could be a few years out, it could be next year. It's, it's too early to try to put money in a budget for that.
So I, not that I want to necessarily change anything specific here, I just know that when spring comes, we may identify that it's worth doing a road project or two that we didn't budget for, wanted to highlight that. If this board wanted, we could shift some funds to that so that we don't have to do an amendment, but reality is.
I think that's premature, honestly, that's my opinion.
And I do too, I just wanted to lift this up, because we're going to need to anticipate that these kinds of things are going to happen. The only comment I have regarding the 995 up for the sidewalk projects, and again, I'm thrilled because it's a lot, is if we're not able to think we can spend all that in fiscal year 24. One option would be to lower that sum. Just to, I'm looking for the right page. I was looking at the projected general fund balance. For the end of the year. So right now, this budget is a, would be spending 270,000 roughly, more than our expenses? Or more than our income? Excuse me? Do we want to balance that? I know the intent of this board has been for many years to try to spend down some of our cash reserves. So the hope would be great if we can actually get that many sidewalks in, pathways.
Well, I thought we already, like, didn't we already do the engineering study for the projects? Or we're just waiting for?
Not for that much, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can, can you update us on how much of that we've got, like, actually shovel-ready, or?
I don't think much of it's shovel-ready.
Okay.
The recommended budget has a, in the general fund, has a use of fund balance of $23,000. And I think you said 270,000.
Oh, I misread it, then.
And that was the requested budget, so that clarification.
Appreciate that.
And the township does have a lot of flexibility. What, you have a healthy fund balance, you have flexibility if a road project comes along. The sidewalks, there's a lot of money budgeted there. That is flexibility if a road project comes along that is, you know, engineered and designed and rated for construction in 2024 from the road commission. So you could use some of that money. The sidewalk money, you know, we're trying to focus on Broomfield, Bluegrass. There's a couple of other sidewalks mentioned here. Isabella Road between Broadway and Pickard, I want to say. Bud Street from Pickard north to the park. So we do plan on doing, you know, laying sidewalk this year. But at the same time, that is a lot of money. If we get held up, again, with easements and that kind of thing. It may not all get spent this year. If not, it'll flow to fund balance, or it's available for something else.
So the part where it goes to the dog park, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, and that's 300,000, right? That we partnered with the city for?
I believe that's right, I'd have to look in this book, but I think you're right there.
And again, I'm all, biggest reason I'm really lifting this up is I want us to know going into the year that there are some things we won't know until we get into the year. And we had, these are two large, typically two large sections of our general fund budget is roads and pathways, typically. So I just kind of want to lift that up. So I'm not suggesting I feel like I have to change anything, I just wanted to make everyone aware.
Thank you.
I like the way it's presented, and it also shows the public, you know, what the goals are and what the projects that we want to get going. So I think it's, it's kind of a useful thing for the public.
Good point. I had one question, everybody good with that?
Yes.
I don't know if this page five, maybe it's back in the sewer section of the same section we're in right now. New capital projects, kind of the top third of the page there. And in that is listed upgrades to pump station two, upgrades, replacement of pump station five. I just, I wanted to ask the question, again, I've already asked our manager this. But I wanted to ask it here for the public and for you. One of the things we applied for grants for included pump station five, as well as pump station four and the additional screw for the water treatment. And I just wanted to ask, is that something then? We're not planning this next fiscal year, but we should be looking at that in, say, 25 or 26?
All those things you will want to, we will be considering and will eventually be doing. This budget was developed when we had constructed the, I guess, the clean water project plan. And we had submitted the application. We had not yet heard back the results of that. So there are things that are in the budget right now that may be in the project plan and also vice versa. So we need to look back at this a little bit and make sure we're in alignment between what we're wanting to do in the budget, and the budget, since we have since found out that we've received zero for the clean water grant. But remember, we've also already submitted our intent to apply next year. And I believe it's, the process would be some additional awards in 2024 through that intent process. But we need to do the screw. And, and those pump stations that you mentioned, four and, what was the other one?
Five.
Two, five.
And actually, some upgrades at two, but we had applied for four, five and screw, I think.
Right.
Were the big things.
It's actually a fine screen.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we, five was in the clean water revolving fund, the fine screen. And there was, four was in there. 10 is Maulberry Lane, that's a relatively small, it's a smaller project if you look at pumps, I mean, it's still a big amount of money. But then you look at a pump station, that's a small amount of money. Pump station two was one that we had in this year's budget. We, with the other things we had going on, we did not get to pump station two. So that would be one we would look at again next year, but that was also in the clean water. And then pump station five, we have an engineering agreement already approved for that. We are going to be submitting for permits by the, and by December 1st is our plan. And then once we get permits, we'll move forward. If we were to get clean water funding, we have talked to them about some of these projects we have in those project plans. We can get reimbursed for those, because they were in our project plans. So there is a possibility if we did the projects and had expended funds, we would be able to get that money back through clean water. So it wouldn't be like, we wouldn't still be eligible for that money.
If we spent it out of the general fund or ARPA, or both, I mean, obviously the same thing now. But if we spent it out of that and then we got reimbursed, would it go back to the general fund?
No, it would go back to the sewer fund, because those are enterprise funds and that money stays all within.
So the sewer would have to pay for it, not the general fund?
Right.
Okay.
Got you. Thank you.
Biggest reason I asked about this is I was remembering the Clean Water Act presentation. Going, wow, well, is there a reason we didn't put those in? I'm assuming it's not oversight, so it was more of a question of wanting to understand what the plan was with some of these. And I think, I appreciate the answers.
And then the fine screen was also in the clean water. But that is more of an urgent need at the wastewater plants, so we left it in the budget. And, you know, some of this is going to be dependent on how much time we have, because we've got it in that money in the drinking water. Those are some pretty big projects, so we'll have to maneuver through that. So as Mark said, we're going to have to look at some of those things and fine tune. Okay, are we going to wait on this one? Because we did apply again, and do we just wait or do we proceed? So we'll, we'll fine tune that a little bit more as, as we get working on this. Because the drinking water is going to take, you know, it's going to take a lot of time, so.
Is there a timeline that we have to adhere to for spending that money?
We have, yes, we have five years to spend.
Okay.
So we have some time, but it goes pretty fast.
Yeah. Yeah, it does.
As you get older, it goes even faster.
So anyways, that was another question I asked, any other more on that? All good. I had asked about, and I've talked to some of you about this, but getting some additional training for some of our board chairs and board vice chairs. So that they're properly prepared for when there's a meeting that becomes contentious and they have to deal with unruly visitors and/or making sure that our chairs and vice chairs know the law. So that they know what they can and cannot do in their meetings.
And stay safe.
Yep, all of that. And so been having conversations with our manager about that. I know he's, I hope I can state, if I'm stating correctly, correct me, please. Managers also talked to at least one director, if not more, regarding that. And I think there's general support for the idea that it would be helpful to make sure our board chairs and vice chairs are properly prepared. Does that make sense? So when I asked about this, I said, do we have money for that? The response, correct me again if I misquote you, was essentially, there's money in training for this. We shouldn't need additional training monies to accomplish that. Is that reasonable?
That's a correct statement, as far as what I said. And then I also said that it's, that Rodney and I, Community Economic Development Director, him and I could possibly do this type of training ourselves as well. So we, which would kind of make it free. Only kind of.
You get nothing for nothing.
Because you just approved my employment agreement, paying me to do this stuff.
So I wanted to lift that up, because it was something that I know, I've talked to a couple trustees about some issues we've had in the past. And, and there was been some discussion about that would be a helpful thing for our board chairs to have. So I wanted to lift it up publicly here for some of those that haven't heard that from me yet. And then see if there's any pushback from that perspective.
No.
Oh, absolutely not.
This one I didn't get to ask, but I noted it today because I got an email today. Border review, I forgot to mention this, my board comments, board reports. Border review will have our November, December meetings getting ready for the March official border review, where the public gets command and appeal their, their taxes or assessments. The border review last year, I guess it would be this year for 2023 meetings, kind of requested that we consider holding some public trainings so that people know how to contest the assessed rolls of their properties. And that, that makes it easier on the border review, because then, you know, you're teaching residents, businesses, et cetera, how to come in and make their case.
Yeah.
And I think I've mentioned this before, but I wanted to make sure, I know, I've talked to our manager about this, he's been supportive. I think he's done some work on this. I'm assuming that doesn't take additional funds based on what I know about discussions we've had.
If it did, it'd be de minimis. We have, the assessor is aware of the, of the need and the request, and she thinks it makes sense too. I have not reviewed any, anything she's done yet in terms of curriculum or syllabus or anything like that. But we do anticipate that training to occur, I would say, in February.
Could we put that on the tax bill that goes out in December? Or that goes out in December, that goes out for winter?
Probably with the, I would say with the assessments, when the, when the.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, hello.
When the assessments go out and say, hey, you know, this is what's going to happen to your property value, it's going to go up 5%.
Oh, I like that, I'm sorry.
Here's an opportunity to learn how to ask questions about that and/or challenge it if you want. But also an opportunity, Clerk Cody, did you have something?
I just got a quick question before you go to something else.
Yeah.
So those, is it possible to make a video, like, that you can put on the website? Like a short kind of training video, like, or this is kind of to present? That's what we do for, like, election stuff, so you can, this is how you do this, you know, just like little short video?
Then they can access it anytime of day.
So, you know, I don't know if that's possible, but just like a short kind of sum it up.
That's a good idea.
Even if it was to show them how to fill out the form.
Yeah.
Just, just the form and all the, all the lines that you have to have something in. Having said on the border review, if we were strict, there would have been quite a few people that would have to, you know, if you're, if you're really busy, you have to excuse them. Because they don't have it filled out properly. And they're asking you, what do I put down? Well, we can't tell them what to put down. We can explain it to them. Fortunately, the time that I sat on it, we had periods of time in between people coming in, so we were able to kind of, this is what this line means. Whatever you put in is what you put in, you know? This is what this means, and this is what you need to fill out. Fortunately, they had the opportunity or time to fill it up before the next person came in. Even something like that is.
Yeah, I think.
An online video that says, here are all the items that you need to have filled out to even walk in the door.
Right, and, and the training that happens for the public, that could be filmed and put up as well.
Absolutely.
I like the idea.
If our website's not compatible, maybe a link to go to a video?
Right. The biggest mistake I saw through, I think, most often is people challenge their taxable value rather than their assessed value. You really can't challenge that, you can challenge the assessed value, which affects your taxable value.
Right. And then the value they put down sometime nullifies the reason they're there.
Right. And yeah, that, yeah. Anyways, so I wanted to ask about that. The only other questions I had, I just had a few in the fees, but I've dominated a little time. So if anybody else has anything that's in the various funds they want to talk about.
I had one simple selfish question on my side with the Vector truck. I see we ran into needing a camera for the, for the end of it and cleaning out the attachment.
Yeah, that's, the guys have had a little demo on that and.
Would they go through a training on it?
Yes, I mean, he brought one up and they used it in a particular spot. So it's an attachment that they would like to have.
Oh, they're amazing.
That John thinks that they'll use quite a bit for locating sewers and when they're cleaning them to see what condition the pipe is in.
What's down there before they dig. Yeah, that is, that's exceptional. I, I know it's just, I know it's a simple, but I personally wanted to bring that up. And one other thing, as far as trainings with the Vector truck, have you sent?
They have not gone to the out-of-town training yet, but they have been here several times and trained on site. They've taken it out in the field, and they've come back several times when they've had specific, but that's when they brought the camera.
Yeah. I'm one of the, well, perfect.
Yes, but there is a training that they can take, and it's more on the maintenance of it, is my understanding. And that, so we still have to set that up, we have not done that yet.
Set that up.
That's probably something we'll try to do in the winter. I know that they have, this is done at the factory, and they have some times that they do it.
Right, right, I remember that.
It's hard to send a couple guys to be gone, we only have the guys that are running, clearly they're running that truck, there's only four of them.
Yeah.
So if you send two, you're pretty shorthanded. So we'll have to navigate that a little bit.
I would love to see that operation sometime, when, here, when it's at Union Township.
Yeah, we'd love to show you.
Oh, that's great.
They use, they use the truck all the time, they love the truck, so just in case I need some.
I bet you they do. Well, thank you, thank you for your time.
Trustee Bill?
Yeah, just to go back to the border review, I just Googled it on the state of Michigan. They have a link to a 26-page FAQ with links. So there's no apparent video there, but I'd like, I'd like to see that. So there's no apparent video there, but I'd like, I'd like to see that video. I think that'd be great. And then also add the state tax commission link, which is pretty, uh, pretty sensitive right here. That's all.
You're quick.
Well, I wasn't doing anything. I was just
Ignore it. Where do you see that FAQ?
StateofMichigan dot tax commission.
Good find?
Thank you.
Trustee Bills?
Sure.
I remembered what I forgot. Can I say it now?
Sure.
So, okay.
This county, right?
Yeah, the county commission. With regard to the, the MRF, you know, they're trying to get, they went to the state to make a presentation on the regional MRF they're trying to put together, you know? I don't know what they call it now, but like a Yes, sir. That's a hundred percent. Their presentation was granted the best presentation of any township and they got $10,000 for it.
Wow.
For, for presenting it. But I thought that was pretty darn impressive. But it doesn't surprise me because that's a really well-oiled machine. So that's awesome. I just wanted to bring that.
Yeah, that's good to lift up.
It was awesome. I mean, they got a round of applause for that at the meeting last night. I thought it was cool. Okay, that's it.
Trustee Thering, Clerk Cody. Okay, I'm gonna take us back to fees if we can go there briefly. I, I don't have any major stuff here, just sort of more understanding for me than anything else, I think. I'm kinda surprised no one brought this up. We had a lot of discussion on fees last year.
I looked at it.
Yeah, you know, it's nice to see some are going down, some are being elevated. There was just some new stuff that I'm not sure I fully understand the whys, but so when you get to fees, they're not page numbered, but I guess the, the second page, planning commission zoning board appeals, other requests, site plan review. The last item in that first section is amendment to an approved site plan, same as the new application. I just was wanting to understand why would it be the same? Is it essentially the same amount of work from the township and planning commission perspective?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I didn't expect that and I figured it must be the case, but, so that would be also true with the special use permit. So we did add some additional escrow deposits. I'm assuming these are all largely probably just from going, going through these and seeing how they affect their system and knowing how to better anticipate the needs there.
Yes, it's based on experience. We've been adding some escrow dollars to different types of fees or processes over the last couple of years. And in some cases, we've created some new ones and and yes, it is primarily in the ZBA area. But with all the notices and the time, which equals salaries and such. We thought it made sense to require the escrow amount. We don't think these amounts are unreasonable. Most of this money gets spent for the advertising and whatnot. And then the balance, if any, is returned to the applicant.
Thank you. I think those are the only two questions that I actually had in that.
I thought it was pretty straightforward on the thesis here.
The, the one that took us into large debate last year was the cutoff and
That's correct, sir.
Yeah. I remember it well.
Oh, yeah, I, I saw it.
So, uh, I guess let me ask this board, everybody's had a chance to ask questions, make comments. Are you good with what you're seeing then?
Yes.
I've only briefly looked through it, so I haven't really dug into it yet, I have to tell you, so.
Well, we do have one additional public meeting, so we'll have the opportunity to discuss this again. And then hopefully on December 13th, we're able to get something in the books, cause by law we had to pass a budget by end of calendar year.
And in that intervening time, please call, stop by, whatever, your pleasure, Saturday mornings, whatever you wanna do. Just let me know.
Ideally, we don't wanna be in a position where we do the public hearing and then make a bunch of drastic changes post that in December. So if we're gonna do it, if you, if you feel like we need to discuss a, a major change, the last, the public hearing date would be really the latest date. We should probably explore that.
I agree. Especially since I'll be in the Caribbean any second.
Oh, that's where. So we're all good?
Good.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stuldryer, based on questions and stuff like that, do you have any additional comments you'd like to share?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you to you and staff for getting this all together. I know it's a lot of work. It's a big part of the cycle every year. So thank you to everyone. Saying hi, thank you to the directors back there too.
Yes.
Much appreciated. That brings us to item 11D on our agenda. Clerk Cody, that was the, since you weren't here for that, we moved item 10H in the consent agenda out. So that'll be our item 10, 11D. So this is Public Act 152, Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act Exemption Cost Sharing Resolution. You probably didn't anticipate this being polled, but is there anything you'd like to introduce on this?
Yes, there's a report that begins on page 28 of your agenda packet. This is an annual consideration. Public Act 152 requires government employers to establish certain parameters or standards as it relates to employee healthcare benefits. The act provides three alternatives that the board may consider. The one being recommended is that the local unit of government opt out of the cost sharing requirements. This does require a two-thirds vote, so it would need to be probably a roll call to identify two-thirds. We recommend opting out. We've been advancing along in the continuum for cost sharing from a hundred percent paid by the employer to more recently 89, 89 and a half percent paid by the employer. 2025, the collective bargaining agreement has the cost share at 8812. So we think, and, and then you, you need to look at your local financial conditions and all that. We think we're, you know, we, we are the ones closest to the ground. We manage our funds well. We need, want good healthcare benefits. We understand the cost constraints and but for now, we're opting, we're recommending that we opt out of, of those requirements and I think it's fair to say that if the board wanted to go with options one or two, that would be right now contrary to the collective bargaining agreements, but that, that's just a statement. It's not, you know, be happy to do whatever the board would like us to do.
I think it's, I think we're on the right path. And it looks like within the next 10 years, maybe we'll be at the 8020. Is that about right?
My personal goal is 8020. That's what it was when I came in here seven years ago. We're making progress. I don't know if my personal goal would ultimately align with the board's goals. The 8020 is pretty pretty aggressive and I, you know, I only want to upset the apple cart as it relates to employer, employee relations so much. But I fully intend to keep moving down that path.
Well, even if we don't get to 8020, I, I think we're on the right path. And I think 8812 is pretty significant from where you were several years ago. I think it's wonderful. And it may even steer people into, instead of taking the Cadillac plan, take the lesser expensive plan and save money on the side in an HSA or something, you know, which is what I think people should be doing. The catastrophic problems, you know?
Thank you, thank you. So we have this before us. Any other questions? Happy to take any motions, as so moved?
I move to consider, to approve the attached, the resolution opting out of the employer healthcare benefit plan contribution limits as allowed under the state of Michigan Public Act 152, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act for the benefit year of 2024, which will require a two-thirds approval.
Support. With motion by Bills, support by Smith. Any other discussion on this? I'll just add that I, I agree with trustee Bill's statements, so thank you for articulating those.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
And Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
Motion passes unanimously. We needed two-thirds, so I think that counts. With that, moving on, on the agenda, item 12, extended public comment. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up extended public comment at 7:59 PM.
We have no one in the waiting room.
Thank you. You knew my question was coming, right? See, no one present. Let the record show no one present. No one connected remotely. We'll close extended public comment at 7:59 PM. Item 13 on our agenda, managers' comments. Mr. Stuldryer, you have?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Wow.
Is it sunny?
That brings us to 14 on our agenda, final board member comment. Trustee Thering?
I'm all set, thank you.
Clerk Cody?
I can give my report for the road commission if you want.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, but this last meeting they had, the manager was absent and they didn't have anything on the agenda, so there's nothing really to talk about. But you were there. There was a couple people come and complained about stuff.
When it's my turn, I'm gonna ask you a question, if that's okay. Trustee Smith?
Just when we passed the resolution about what the state house and senate was doing as far as taking local zoning away, you know, it's passed the senate today, passed the house already. I was, you know, watching the testimony. And when you have the lobbyists from the Michigan Association of Counties and the lobbyists for the Michigan Township Association going up there and saying, we've been left out of any negotiations. I just find it disheartening that they were not included in any of the real conversations that was going on. And when you get the director or the chairman of the Michigan Public Service Commission saying, currently, right now, we have 17,000 acres that are being used for renewable energy. To get to the goals, we need about 220,000 acres of land. And what I saw is there's about 10 million acres of farmland, so you're taking 10, 2% of available farmland. Yeah, it doesn't sound like much, but that could be all, guess what? They're gonna be close to transmission lines, they're gonna be close to substations. It was just really disheartening to see how fast this went through. And they didn't even give the people, the locals, a chance. And they say, well, we're giving you the opportunity to speak, you know, when the developers comes in, but if the developer doesn't like the decision, they go to the Michigan Public Service Commission anyways. So it's like, it, it was just really, I'm just, was not happy. So it's my comments.
I think, if I can follow up on that, I think in my reading of it, to, to get a feeling for how much land that is, is like half a county, half a standard Michigan county. Which is a ton of land. And I thought I heard that the house had passed the wrong bill.
There was some senate amendments that came in today and the lady that represents Michigan Association County, she goes, I'm not even sure what the S1, you know, revision was at that point, cause they were just rushing them through. So I think there have to, there might be some, some tweaks that they have to do it, but I know that they want to adjourn this week before the 90 days, so whatever the other politics that's going on, but it was just, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for that information. I was wondering about that. I, I have not followed it and it, it incenses me. I, I can't believe that they did that without any kind of time to respond, really.
I mean, there's been other things that they went on and they, they talked about. Different things where there was, like, where they brought in MTA and MAC into these conversations so they could get their feedback and try to come up with some sort of agreement where not, you're not gonna like it all, but at least you're gonna feel better about it. It was just, you know, I, I just, I was, I was shocked.
And it's not the first time and it's probably not the last, the state takes local control away and, and they, they do. They, they push it through quickly and they don't wanna hear from the local units on those kinds of things.
No.
Trustee Bills?
Yeah, I have a few things. Number one, I would just like to reach out and say that I'm, I feel really sorry for the county for all the problems they're facing right now. And I feel glad to be in Union Township because we're, we're blessed to be, you know, well managed and, and, I mean, not, not, not that they're not. But that, you know, we have a better financial position and I hope they can get, get their feet on the ground, so. Other than that, I'd like to wish all of you and all of the constituents and all of the staff a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Trustee Brown?
Can't really follow up with anything better than that, to be the truth. I'm good.
So last meeting, Clerk, we weren't able to be here and I asked the question of trustee Bills, if they had discussed something during the county commission meeting. And just, I, I knew that the other 15 townships and maybe some other municipalities had signed on with the county to do elections. But as I understood it, they were gonna do that at the county building. Do you know what's going on with that? Cause I don't, my, my understanding is that county building's not gonna be ready for them to do voting in.
They can't have it at the Lux Building either. Conflict of interest. They might, they can have the presidential primary there. So that'll be okay, but hopefully everything will be done by the time
With the county building?
August, November comes around. August, November?
I don't think so. It's gonna take at least a year, they said. They don't even know. It's, it's, it's all, they have to take a whole wall out of each room and they have to take all the carpet up. They have to do samples of a whole bunch of stuff and they don't even have an estimate yet. So they don't, and then there's the reconstruction after that, so.
I mean, they do have like the commission on aging as an option for
Yeah, that seems like
Nine day early, they can still split it off.
Sure.
That, that seems like logical to me. I just didn't know, I hadn't, I figured things had to change, but I didn't know what had been decided.
No, yeah.
Okay, thanks. It's more than I knew, so I appreciate it.
Find out.
The clerk was out last night. Her deputy was there, but, but she didn't say anything about that.
Appreciate it. And it was dark when we got here. And with that, our business is done. Happy to adjourn, or take any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Bills. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Adjourned at 8:07 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.